We're back in session. Good morning, colleagues. We're going to confirm whether we have a quorum. It appears we don't for the moment, so we will wait until the senators come back into the hall. Good morning again, colleagues. It appears all the senators are back into the room, so we will begin. We are back on legislative concurrences where we ended off yesterday. Senator Rigel, our acting majority leader for this morning, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place into the voting file from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, the nomination of David B. Herrera to serve as a member of the Chamaralant Trust Commission with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We've exhausted the legislative concurrences, and we are now back to our second reading. And we are on resolution number 343-36COR. I will recognize Senator Torres.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I begin, I was going to propose to introduce this on behalf of the prime author. There is some indication by the prime author that there is a substituted resolution, and I wanted to confirm if that has in fact been received by the clerk, because I'm not aware of one at present. But I understand, based on comments from the prime author, that there is a substituted resolution. So can we first please confirm that?
All right, we are going to... The clerks has not yet have a copy of that substituted resolution, so while we are waiting for that, the only two bills... Well, we've got the two bills passed on file, Bill number 219, Bill number 137, or sorry, set aside, they've been set aside, and Bill number 231. And we were going to go into committee of the whole on Bill number 292 and 298, but it does not appear that the sponsor of those bills is back. So we will just take a short recess for the clerks to get the substitute version of the resolution number 343-36COR. Thank you. So we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you for your patience, colleagues. The clerk has received, has not received a substitute version of that resolution, so that will not be, we will not proceed with that. Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Mrs. Mozzie, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move to go back to motions.
On the motion to go back to motions, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are back on motions. Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, colleagues. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the objections of Imago Hagan Guahan, I move to act on veto bill 1136. And I'd like to discuss it at this time.
Oh, please, please proceed.
Madam Speaker, several days ago, the President of the United States declared the pandemic is over and that we are now in an endemic situation with regard to COVID-19. Nowwithstanding the fact that many of his colleagues and others have tried to walk that back, many folks believe it's true. Many states, many cities, many counties have moved on to live with COVID. Madam Speaker, embedded in this entire time that we've been under the public health emergency have been some things that have been extremely troubling. I wonder sometimes, Madam Speaker, why we haven't moved to not discriminate anymore against the vaxxed and the unvaxxed. I think you've seen as well as I have in social media and other postings and other listening to the radio, talk shows, media, and just meeting with people, Madam Speaker. Maybe originally that thought may have had some merit. But as time went by, and now, as we know, many people who are vaccinated, fully vaccinated, double boosted, have gotten COVID over and over again. But yet even our nation's capital, Madam Speaker, there are individuals who fight and would die for our freedoms, who are not allowed to serve in the military, being unvaccinated. There are teachers and critical care workers and others on our island, Madam Speaker, who have left the island or even left their professions because they were discriminated against, even till today. I wonder sometimes, Madam Speaker, if we would have gone out of this public health emergency earlier, would we have continued this practice of discrimination and this practice of choosing winners and losers? It's under this veil of this public health emergency, Madam Speaker, that these things continue. Now, I know some will say, and I'll carry on with this in my closing statement or, you know, remarks. I'll just be brief here. You know, Bill 1136 is designed to have the administration, whatever administration, not this governor, not representatives necessarily of this administration, any administration as we go forward, to come down to this legislature after 60 days have elapsed and the start of a pandemic, and appear before this body so that things like choosing vaxxed and unvaxxed, things like what is our situation in terms of closing businesses, things along those lines can be debated in the People's House. Why discuss this now even though that's not necessarily what 1136 would do, Madam Speaker? Many have speculated in our community now, what is left? Our administration represents to us the people of Guam that they have lifted all the mandates, that the only mandate left is masking in medical facilities. Madam Speaker, you can Google that right now. Even nationwide, they're walking away from that as well. So there can only be one thing left, Madam Speaker, and look at what we have done. We didn't have Bill 1136 because we failed to override it in the governor vetoed. But what have we done? Through two budget cycles now, we've implemented reporting requirements. We've done things to strengthen the open government law. We've done things, everything aside from the ability to have a dialogue with the administration on why another 30 days of this public health emergency. Why is that so hard? But we did it, Madam Speaker. We did it through bills, we did it through the budget process, and still, and still many of us feel as though we're left in the dark. If we have to be in this public health emergency, then for God's sake, if there's open government laws that are being waived continuously, if there's procurement that is happening under this circumstance, then the least we could do is get that information, be transparent. You know, sometimes I hear some critics in the media, and it's fine, that's what it's all about, that this body has been inactive. I don't believe so. That's why I laid these things out. We've done it through bills. We've done it through speeches on this floor when we've been debating budgets. We've done it when we've been questioned openly in the public, what are you doing? I was at a forum, Madam Speaker, where a teacher who is very open and was very angry throughout the entire term of the mandates as an unvaccinated teacher, I know we all know who we're talking about, that even with the efforts of Bill 11, even with everything we were doing, it wasn't enough. And I can understand that. But I'm going to say I'm still proud of this body. I think this body has done a lot. I think we have introduced great bills when it comes to checks and balances. I think we have done good cooperation when it comes to working amongst each other to do everything that we can to get transparency. Now, I'm going to close in doing something very fair, because I think it's fair. Once again, I will reiterate, there have been some great things that have happened and accomplishments during this pandemic. It is, and it was unprecedented at the beginning. And I'll recount the story again. I was sitting with my wife, we were shopping to buy supplies for the house when the announcement was coming on the radio, we stayed in the car. No question about it. I want to commend once again all of those frontliners, nurses, law enforcement, teachers, the courts, when they made their presentation and came down here and talked about how they've made great strides now because they've learned so much throughout this pandemic. I get it. But one thing we can never do, one thing we can never do is when we see that the tide has shifted and we know that we have an obligation to stand up and provide that checks and balances, particularly when we hear it from our people time and time again. We need to act. Now, I know we had this discussion about illacrity and our ability to move, but Madam Speaker, we had a chance when we did at least make an attempt to end the public health emergency to do what Bill 30 called for. We had everybody down here. In the morning and in the afternoon, I asked a question, a simple question. Please demonstrate to us, what are the federal requirements other than the need for SNAP, which can be done independently going forward, and the need for the National Guard? Show us the rest of the conditions which need us to be in this public health emergency, expend federal funds. Madam Speaker, that was never produced till today. Once again, circling back to, there can be really maybe only one or two reasons. And that's not to have to deal with the open government law and the pesky procurement requirements. Any of us who in this body who will be fortunate, as those of us who are running for office again, to be seated in the 37 Guam Legislature, I hope that there's a commitment, first thing out of the gate, to take a look at the emergency powers and revamp some of those sections. We can start with this right now, Madam Speaker. We can start with this. In 40 days plus days, we're going to have an election. We don't even know whether it will be this administration, other administration. We don't even know whether we'll be here. But we can leave one thing behind, one thing. We started the process in taking a look at what these emergency powers and the powers bestowed within them have done. Over two decades ago, nobody knew. I don't even know that they were really contemplating this size of a pandemic in terms of worldwide and its impact. Good enough, understandable. You know, there's been that debate back and forth. This is a bipartisan past piece of legislation, and even some former governors that complain about it, voted on it. But then again, it's your right to complain about it because you didn't contemplate. But you are in the here and now, 28 months after the first declaration. If anything, I just ask my colleagues, join me in not necessarily a rebuke per se, but join me in starting the process of revamping this legislation, revamping this law, that whatever governor sits going forward and sits... whatever governor sits going forward and sits beyond our lifetimes, God forbid, doesn't have to deal with a pandemic, but that this body has a larger role in the event something god-awful like that would take place. Madam Speaker, I humbly ask our colleagues, not in an adversarial motion per se, but in an ability to start the process of taking a look at the Emergency Powers Act, to override Bill 11 and allow for at least that check and balance of having to come to this legislature and justify the need for an extension of a public health emergency beyond the initial phase. Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker, I look forward to the dialogue on this issue.
Sidus Massey, Senator, on the motion on Bill 11, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, this is a bill that continues to come up, and while we recognize the governor continues to take advantage of this authority every month almost repeatedly to declare this emergency and justify because of these federal benefits for SNAP and the need for them, as to the reason she continues every month to sign a proclamation for an emergency declaration. I think the sponsor of this bill is a little too kind because it's really the failure of this legislature and the previous legislature to address this issue because we have colleagues here that choose not to vote for their responsibility to be engaged in these major decisions that affect our island. I mean, I'm hopeful in the future we will not encounter what we've been through the past several years with this pandemic because, gosh, I don't think we even imagined, you know, you can watch movies and things about it and talk about it, but when you actually have to live through it, and think of the members of our community and our families and friends that did not survive it, that may have had other health-related issues that were exacerbated as a result of COVID and are not here. I mean, we're over four hundred members of our community that have been identified, that have passed away, you know, from the very young to the very old and in between. But what this represents, you know, before we always said it's a reflection also, yes it is, of the governor, because for all the talk, and yes, we are a few weeks before an election, but there's been such little engagement in the leadership, the elected leadership of this community between the legislature and the governor about this particular issue. There might be select discussions among certain members of the legislature, but none of us represent the Guam Legislature. It's only our collective actions as a body that does that. And there has really been no major engagement with regards to that. I think the only meeting collectively that the legislature had with the governor was last year to provide potential recommendations on the expenditures and priorities of federal funds. And my dear colleagues, I only ask you, where did all your wonderful suggestions go? Because I didn't hear anything about it. I don't think the people of Guam heard as to whether or not those things were really taken into consideration. We still have close to three hundred million dollars that the governor is still holding on to with the intent to spend to construct a new hospital that, while there's resistance to the location because of the private landowners and other issues, including, you know, who's going to pay for all this and how is it going to be paid for and how's it going to be maintained, while our own Guam Memorial Hospital continues to be challenged with regards to basic maintenance and safety and health of our island residents that are currently up there and for the doctors and nurses and other support staff that work at the hospital. It's a failure of this legislature once again. I mean, that's the reason I ran for office two years ago is because I was so disgusted with the direction of leadership, because I saw the legislature in particular, a body to which I had served six consecutive terms prior, roll over every single month. The legislature itself did not stand up to its responsibilities, to want to be involved and engaged, to help carry the burden of making these decisions, especially decisions that had such direct impact on the lives of all of us. We don't have a democracy so one person can rule, so that we abdicate our responsibilities. Because how do you go before the public and ask them to support you again when you don't stand up for them? Oh, maybe they'll forget. Let me smile enough, let me make sure I put my big smiling picture out there so maybe they'll forget that when the time came for me to make a decision, to stand up and be counted, to make decisions on their behalf, or more importantly, have them be involved and engaged in the decision-making process, I voted no. And I didn't vote no once, I voted twice, I voted three. What is this, our fourth, fifth time already this year? The hypocrisy of it all, that's the one thing I really detest, is hypocrisy. We want to portray one thing, but when the time comes, we're so compromised in our own relations, sometimes our own other personal relations, that we're not here to represent the interests of the public. Are we fair to stand out of the crowd because we have the in-group and the out-group? You're either vaccinated or you're not vaccinated. I concur with, you know, Senator Chris, you're right. I mean, I still, now there's another booster we have to go get if we haven't gotten it, the uptenth booster. Because obviously, while at one end we're being told, this is the, you know, the scientific decisions that need to be made, and these are the shots you need to take, and if you don't take them, you're not going to be safe, and yet we have people that have taken them still have died or still have gotten very sick. But colleagues, if you're going to run for office and you want to stand here and you want to represent the people of Guam because you're so special to be a leader, oh, look at me, ain't I wonderful, ain't I important, oh my goodness. But when the time comes when it really matters, as uncomfortable as it may be to be engaged and make decisions on their behalf, or like I said, more importantly, have them at the table. You know, Madam Speaker, I have a neighbor that I lived next to, we actually built our homes at the same time, about eighteen years ago, and they left. The wife of my neighbor was here in April testifying at a public hearing, relaying her incredible frustration with this whole vaccination, to be vaccinated or not to be vaccinated. And she was a very quiet lady. She's not one person to be known publicly to go out and speak on issues. She was very good at taking care of her home and her family, not necessarily very comfortable at a public forum, and she came down here to this legislature to relay her frustration with the direction of leadership on this island. And in spite of all their time and investment in building their home and raising their children here, her husband had a business that he operated, they closed all that, they packed all that, and they moved off island a couple of months ago. And I know one of the main reasons is they were very dissatisfied with the direction of leadership, these people who were very non-political. They just went out and worked hard and raised their family and were good, law-abiding citizens. And I'm sure they looked around and go, wow, is this how we're going to live the rest of our lives? Is this the environment that we want our children exposed to? Because now, oh my goodness, it's not enough to put the fence up, now we got to put the security system up, and now we have to worry about our personal freedoms being infringed upon. And that's not an uncommon story. Probably other colleagues in here can tell of other people they know. Me, it's just proximity because it's within walking distance of my front door. And that's not a sentiment that isn't shared by a lot, there are many other people that feel that way. Maybe not everyone wants to leave, maybe not everyone can. Because one of the ways to get away from all this, just get on a plane and leave, go somewhere else. Let's go to America. Then we don't have to deal with this. Because some people feel powerless, that they can't do much to change the direction of where things are going, that they are left at the other end of being subjected to this kind of harassment. And as Senator Chris had mentioned, the teacher that he's talking about happens to be my first cousin's daughter. So proximity, just myself, maybe other colleagues can stand here and say the same thing. The anger and the frustration because our people feel they don't have a voice to be heard and impact their own government. Because we're of this opinion that when we elect people to office and they have our power, then not only that, not only they have our power, they take it and then they subjugate you with it. And we're supposed to cower to that kind of nonsense, fear of being harassed, fear of being ostracized. Gosh, some of our colleagues know what that feels like because when you don't play ball with them, boy, they come after you, don't they? And then they come after your family and they start taking them apart on social media. If it's true or not, doesn't matter, it's out there. You become the target. And not too many people can stand that kind of harassment and that kind of pressure, so they sit there and smile and hold hands and play the game. So colleagues, if once again, for those of you that vote no, ah, he, think about that. And if you don't, maybe the people of Guam need to think about that, that you're not there to allow them to be at the table, to be engaged in such major, major issues, especially things that subjugate us and impact our ability to be engaged in making decisions. Because we only have, you know, we're kind of proxies, is really what we are in this session, how we're proxies to the people of Guam. They give us their power for a little while, hoping that we're going to make decisions that are best and on their behalf. And when we don't do that, well, I guess they get to decide about us. Maybe we get to get away with it for a while, maybe they just don't notice because they're so preoccupied with it. Maybe at some point, I've seen the highest people get elected to the Guam Legislature and they're already planning their gubernatorial runs, get unelected. Some of our colleagues have experienced what's that's like. But for this particular issue, this particular issue with what has happened, even after now that we're supposedly at the other end of this pandemic, to not allow this bill to pass is very telling. It's very telling of us. Because this shouldn't be an issue at all. And yes, you know, as Senator Chris, if those of us who are running again are fortunate to be reelected, I guess we'll just have to wait for the next legislature to change it. Because this legislature so far has continued to be resistant. The only thing that's happening is that that base is eroding. We'll just have to see in a month, in November, a little over a month from now, if the people of Guam decide that that's the power base they want to keep, or do they want to change it? Because it's eroding. It's eroding because people like me are here and several of my other former colleagues that ran last election that came back, we came back for a reason. We didn't come back just to sit here and be senator, been there, done that. But we came here to make a change of direction in leadership. And if we're fortunate, I mean, I'm sure my colleagues can speak for themselves, they don't need for me to do it, but in my case, if I'm fortunate to get back in, I'm going to continue to push on these issues. Because I think we've gone in the wrong direction here. We continue to spend money as if it's going out of style. But when the time comes to make decisions that really matter like this, where it involves our people, in the People's House, being able to speak and have their input in making decisions, as you saw, Madam Speaker, the public hearings where people came out and spoke, sometimes relaying to us their direct frustration, and what have we done with it? What have we as a body done with it? I mean, individually, we can each stand up and say what we've done, where our vote has been, but as a body, we have still failed to do that. So think about that, colleagues that are asking, when you go out there and ask for that next vote from a resident out there to vote for you, maybe they need to ask you, what have you done for me with regards to my ability to speak and be involved in the decisions that you're making on my behalf? What have you done about that? Because we'll know. It's not going to be my decision, the people of Guam will let us know in a couple of months what they think about all of this. But certainly for me, I'm going to keep pushing. I'm sure Senator Chris will keep pushing. I'm sure other colleagues that are here on this side of the aisle, the majority of us will keep pushing. And for those of you that don't, well, too bad. That's going to be your legacy that you're going to leave behind, and you're going to be well remembered for it, you know, just like, you know, those that do other things that get unelected out of office or leave office. So it's unfortunate, here we are in, what is it, end of September, second year of this term, and we're still having to ask for an override on this bill. It's very telling. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on Bill 11.
Thank you, Senator. Is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized on the motion on Bill 11? Senator Blaschier, I recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for this opportunity to speak in full support of an override of Bill 11-36. And, you know, I guess, there's just one simple question to ask my colleagues in considering this override. Why are we still in a state of emergency? I ask that with a pause because I'm still trying to figure it out. Almost every restriction, other than now having to wear masks in medical facilities, but other than that, almost every other restriction that has been placed on this community since the start of this pandemic or through this pandemic has been lifted. Almost every activity that was told, that was barred, that was disapproved, that was determined that for health and safety reasons, they could not occur, can now occur. We're letting tourists in from places that have worse situations than we did, without need for testing, without need for proof of vaccination. We're in the process of closing down testing and vaccination sites within the hotels. We've lifted the occupancy restrictions on almost every venue. I went to an event over the weekend with well over six hundred people to include the second-ranked member of this administration there, no mask, no social distancing, no obvious concern for contracting the virus. As was mentioned earlier by the author of the legislation, even the president himself has declared that the pandemic is over. So why are we still in a state of emergency? Because you want to keep the legislature out of doing its basic fiduciary responsibility of helping managing the purse strings of the government. Didn't we get that the last time we were accused of bringing this subject up? We have gone by two budgets in this legislature and have been forced to fund measures that we had no say in its promulgation or in its enactment because it was done by executive And when we didn't fund it, or when we raised the issue about funding it, or raised the issues of how this thing, how it came about, we were told, or at least what was reported to the media and to the community, was we didn't know what we were talking about. We didn't understand. Surely, we didn't understand. Because every opportunity that we've asked to be a part, to participate in the discussions of these things, we've been shot down. We've been invited to the table, but afterwards we said, no, never mind. Remind you, let me remind this body, remember that infamous closed-door ARP meeting that we had at the, in the, in Adaloo's big conference room? Where we were invited to be able to partake and to participate in how we were going to be able to fund the necessary programs or the necessary activities to get us through this pandemic? Only to be told later on, then, yeah, no, never mind. And then to be chastised, and then our national media to have said to us about us... to have said to us about us, oh, the legislature tried to manage the money to determine what's to be funded. Isn't that our job? Isn't that what people had elected us to do? As a matter of fact, that's the only job we have. Everything else can be considered pop in circumstance. But the one main function, the one fiduciary responsibility, the one reason why we exist in this system of democracy, in this government, has been stifled month after month by another executive order, by another declaration of a state of emergency. Now, there's no reason for it. Before, there used to be a long litany of, you know, why we need to continue to stay in the state of emergency. Now, they just don't care. They just say that we're going to extend it another 30 days. What happened to, you know, their own promise of regularly informing this body of the different actions that they were taking and the way they're spending, they're going to be spending the funding, the emergency funding? What happened, Madam Speaker, to the times of the regular meetings that you would have along with, you know, the mayor's console, on the next actions and steps to be taken? Now, how do we find out? We have to wait until we get home so we can watch the six o'clock news, just like everybody else. And we're the first to be blamed when something goes wrong. So I'm asking again. Why are we in state of emergency? What Bill 11 does is it gives us an opportunity to be able to have the necessary discussions to include this body that our government has basically provided. That is, in our responsibility to manage the purse strings of this government. Don't mistake that for saying that we want to manage the operations of the government. That's not our job. We know that. But what else is it going to take? And it's not like this body cannot be reconvened in an hour's notice should something drastic occur. We do that with typhoons, earthquakes, and other natural disasters. And other man-made disasters, for that matter. I'm going to step over the line a little bit here. What? Let me bring in partisan politics. She don't trust us? She don't trust you? Trust that what we want to do is what our people need us to do. We have businesses that are still closed, people that are still out of work, families that have left, people struggling to survive. We want to be able to help them. But how can we? We're still in a state of emergency. We still can't be trusted. Trust? Hmm. That's what this bill is about. It's about trust. Let's regain that. Let's rebuild that. We need to. So colleagues, please, I'm asking for your support in the override of Bill 11. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Blas. On the motion on Bill 11, is there any other senator who would like to be recognized? Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. I stand in full support of the override of Bill 11. You know, Madam Speaker, I was just standing over there at the window, getting a glass of water. There's a tour bus out there, and there's tourists over at the basilica, the park, and they were coming over to the legislature. So many of them. It begs to ask the question, why are we still in this declared state of emergency? Public health emergency at that. Public health has been scaling down their operations. The National Guard has scaled down their operations. The public does not even get an update from the Health Advisory Board from the administration. No longer. There's other emergencies that we have that are going on that the administration needs to pay attention to. We have a public safety emergency that perhaps they should declare a state of emergency for our public safety. Crime has been on the rise. Jose Rios broken into five times. And that's all we see the front page of the media these past several months. It's crime. You don't see the headlines of COVID-19 dominating the headlines of our media or even on the news, on the nightly news. Every once in a while, they'll put out how many people has, are in the hospital. The numbers are low. Just the other day, they put out on the COVID-19 bereavement fund that only half of them have been paid. About 190 individuals, families that applied for the bereavement grant have been paid out of almost 400. So why do we continue to allow this administration to declare this public health emergency when obviously there's no public health emergency? Several months ago, public health that came down and said, well, you know, we need to stay in this so that the additional SNAP benefits would be able to be paid out. That time has come and went. As my colleague has stated, is this about circumventing the procurement process and keeping this body out of doing what it needs to do? As my colleague has stated earlier, it's an election season. General election in about four weeks, four and a half weeks. Do we continue to just allow the administration to declare this public health emergency month after month after month? And not call them into check? None of us have blinders on. We see what's going on. There's rallies out there, there's gatherings, there's fundraisings. Everything is going on as normal. Everything but the executive order for the public health emergency. I'm sure most of us had fundraisers and had people come into our, the venue and no social distancing, no mask requirements, no checking of vaccination cards, no longer requirement coming into the island. We need to do what's right. We need to show the people of Guam that, yes, there are three branches of government. That, yes, this branch will keep the administration in check. So I ask my colleagues to please vote yes on the override of Bill 11. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion on Bill 11, is there any other senator who would like to be recognized? If not, then the sponsor of the motion may close.
Seju Massey, Madam Speaker. I wanted to thank those colleagues who have risen and provided not only eloquent statements, but I think have made a very, very compelling case as to why we need to override the veto of Bill 11-36. I guess just the one observation I would have made by the wonderful comments of my colleagues is the great question of why are we in this public health emergency is also the question of, then the issue of Bill 11, at least for this portion of this pandemic, wouldn't be necessary anymore because it would be over. And there would be no need to report. Many of us believe it should have been over months and months and months ago. But once again, let's close out the session of this agus body, this 36 Guam Legislature, with making a statement going forward that in the awful event of a potential additional pandemic in the future, this legislature has said, we will, we will, we will hold any administration accountable. And the people of Guam will definitely have a seat at the table in the people's house. Seju Massey, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to move that we place this in the voting file, and I'd like to move that we vote on this the same as the other vetoed bill that has been moved for override in our regular voting file, Madam Speaker.
All right. On the motion, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagan Guahan, to place vetoed Bill Number 11-36 COR in the voting file. Are there any members who would, I mean, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Are there any other motions? If not, we're back on second reading. Could I get a motion on the remaining bills on second reading? Resolution Number 343-36 COR. I'm going to call them.
Madam Speaker, can we ask for a moment's recess?
One-minute recess. We're back from recess. Thank you, colleagues. We're now on second reading. Resolution Number 343-36 COR introduced by Senator Talina Cruz Nelson, Acting Majority Leader. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Seju Massey, Madam Speaker, I move to set aside Resolution Number 343-36 at this time.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Bill Number 219-36 LS introduced by Senator Amanda L. Shelton, Acting Majority Leader. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
I believe that was set aside earlier in the session, but I'll make the motion again to set it aside. but I'll make the motion again to set it aside.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Bill Number 292-36 LS, introduced by Senator Talina Cruz Nelson. Acting Majority Leader, Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sijus Massey, Madam Speaker, I move to set aside Bill Number 292-36 at this time.
Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Bill Number 298-36 LS, introduced by Senator Talina Cruz Nelson. Is there any, I mean, Acting Majority Leader, Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sijus Massey, Madam Speaker, I move to set aside Bill Number 298-36.
Thank you, Senator. We have exhausted our second reading file. Oh, on that motion to set aside, I'm sorry. On the motion to set aside Bill Number 298-36 LS, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We have now exhausted our second reading file. Majority Leader, is there a motion to recess Friday at 4:00?
Sijus Massey, Madam Speaker, I move to recess until Friday at 4:00 p.m.
There's a motion to recess to come back Friday at 4:00. We will attempt to vote at that time. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Recess until Friday at 4:00.